Monday, March fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, and we have six o'clock. Catherine, if you'll take the role.
Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Coonsey.
Present.
Trustee Britton.
Here.
Trustee Saviano will be absent. Trustee Tribber.
Here.
Trustee Sauter.
Here.
And President Lionel.
Here. If you'll rise and give your pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. That'll take us to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board on either an agenda or non-agenda item tonight?
Frank Scarpelli, resident of East Dundee.
Hello, good evening. I'm here on the item that you guys have scratched off the agenda, the development at four oh six and four oh eight Barrington Avenue. Many of you here last meeting said that you had just learned about this on Friday night when you received your packet. I'm a little perplexed as to how a development of this character and this nature flies under the radar. I know there was a meeting back on March twentieth of two thousand and twenty-three, but this board took no action at that meeting on either the development, nor staff had also asked at that time for permission to enter into or do negotiated development agreement. Now, the board gave staff no direction on that, yet your staff went ahead and spent time to develop a development agreement just this sometime within this last year. They then brought the development to you guys at the last meeting, and again, many of you said you had just learned about it on Friday when you opened your agenda packet. What perplexes me most is the village has four different single-family zoning classifications. We have the estate zoning, which requires either thirty thousand square feet of land if you have a sewer line or one acre if you're well-inseptic. The R one is eighteen thousand square feet per lot with a hundred-foot width. The R two is nine thousand square feet with seventy-five feet. And then the R three is seventy-two hundred square feet with sixty-five floorboards. So those, that property there, even if you were to re-subdivide it under R two or even R three, you would, you could get, in R three, you could get three lots. In R two, you could only get the two lots that currently exist there. The only, our R four district calls for duplex, just two units. So the only classification that we have for more than two units is our R five. Our R five is then limited that you need four thousand square feet of land for every unit. An acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. So by our code, the most you could get on one acre of land would be ten point seven five units. So how did staff bring to you guys a development agreement for twenty units on point six five of an acre? That property there, if zoned R five, the most that it could accommodate would be eight units. The developers stood here and said they weren't going to ask for any variances. I don't know how they would do without variances. They would need tax amendments and variances. So I'm just a little perplexed as to why village funds were expended on such a development that I feel should have gone to a committee of the whole or something just to find out if the board wanted staff to put the time and resources into a development agreement.
Thank you. Thanks. Is there anybody else?
Mark Rayco. East Dundee resident.
Just very briefly, I just want to say that we're pleased to see that this proposal has been withdrawn and just hope that the board only consider single-family if this thing is resurrected and comes to the table again. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Peggy Scarpelli, East Dundee resident.
Hello. Yes, I too am grateful that you guys pulled that. I just think that East Dundee is a town of people who, a lot of them were born here, moved here when they were young, still live here. People comment about, they think it's weird when they come to this town and there's so many people who were originally from here. And I think it's really sad to have somebody who's lived in their house for fifty years next to a househead zone, single-family, and then to be told that the board's working on putting up a big apartment building next to it. That's not what I, I don't think it's what our town is about. And I hope that the board thinks long and hard about following the comprehensive plan. And before you guys put time and energy and money into moving forward and even wasting a developer's time, that you look at the zoning, you talk to the neighbors. I'm extremely upset by the fact that I watched after this meeting, I had the time to watch the meeting from last year, and I saw Trish Saviano say, you know, I need to find out what the neighbors think before I can comment on this. And one of your employees, Franco, said, well, we mailed a letter to the owners, and none of them bothered to reply. And that's a lie. A letter was mailed to the surrounding houses, only the ones right there, and that letter said, we're going to take down the pump house and we might develop it someday. It didn't say we're going to put apartments on there. And I, you as board members should be very upset by this because he told you that the staff told the neighbors. And I've talked to all the neighbors. I mean, I, you know, one, one person said, oh yeah, I got a letter, it said to the resident, and it just said they might do some develop someday. And then last, you know, at the meeting, you guys were saying, well, eventually you guys would have gotten notified and eventually you'd have your turn. But you know, the further that something goes down the road, the harder it is to stop it. And so I would just hope from now on, when you're looking at something like this, you think about the zoning, and if it's single-family, you think long and hard about putting an apartment building in the middle of single-family houses. I got onto the Nextdoor app and did my first post, and I don't know how to find it after I posted it, disappears, but I've tried. Because I know, I read the post and I see that Kathleen does a wonderful job. I always tell my husband, she always like answers people's questions on there about East Dundee, and it's really nice. So I reached out to her and she did tell me that, you know, she responded when he withdrew the, his proposal. And then she told me that she, she believes that there should be single-family homes there.
I said we'd be open to any proposal that would be less density and preferably.
Preferably single-family.
I can't see into the future of what we can't see, so I just don't want you to mischaracterize what I said in my note. Everybody can go see it.
Okay, well, then I guess I would ask each board member if you would be willing to give your opinion on that property. And if, if you don't want to promise to only pursue listing it as single-family, tell us what you're thinking and a commitment that you will notify the neighbors before you start pursuing any other developments there that aren't single-family. Andy?
This really isn't.
It's not?
No, not for the open discussion.
So how do residents get that? Like, because I did email Trish, I haven't heard back from her.
Right.
I guess, I thought that Kathleen had said she was for the single-family, but I guess I misread that. So how, how would you suggest residents find out how the board members feel? Because I don't go on Facebook and I can't figure out Nextdoor.
Seriously, I understand the challenges there, but the quickest and most effective way would be to call each of the trustees. That would be one way, to get their opinion on this. The other is going to be to stay and call, of course, staff as well, but then stay connected to the website and our Facebook page.
So was this, I went through and I looked at the online newsletter you guys put out. I couldn't find anything regarding this.
Yeah.
I mean, this, this isn't something that is worthy of the newsletter you put online?
No, and, yeah, I, I don't think. No, okay. I think there were, there were some missteps on this, and so we, and we recognize them. So, you know, we'll, we're going to make sure that, you know, our, any future movement on, on the development for this site is going to be thorough.
Okay.
In each respect, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
No problem.
Karen Mensching, East Dundee resident.
Thank you for this opportunity. I would like to add my two cents to the fact that any dwelling that holds thirty-five families with thirty-five additional cars on Barrington is untenable. Already, the traffic on Barrington for us on these side streets where on Summit is just incredible. The traffic, the noise that we already are subjected to by the semis, and now to have additional traffic is just, it doesn't seem that that's been addressed at all. And it's, it's not a wise use. And all of the single-family dwellings that are already in that area would be very negatively impacted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Abraham, I can't, what's the last name?
Rojas.
Rojas?
Rojas.
Rojas.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for listening, Mr. Minissa. We're pretty new here, just moved two years ago. Don't know much about the issue. I just heard today from a neighbor texted us what was going on. It really doesn't sound any good. I'm happy it was withdrawn, you know? But I would be happy if you guys took consideration of all the neighbors, you know? Not just me, but everybody that has lived here many years. And then if you guys can, please consider like single homes for that area, we'll appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all? Anybody else who would like to address the board?
Kim Brunner, four twelve North Van Buren. Just two quick things on addressing the neighbors by that piece of land there. I'm one of them. I never received anything as far as a letter stating that multifamily was going up there. I first learned about it a year ago when I read something on the agenda. And in the past year, I've been religiously checking to see stuff being posted on that because I was against it from the start, and I'm still against it. So that is something I have been looking for, and you have been not transparent on it at all. So on record, I'm totally against it. And I would like you to see if anyone does put something forward, whether it's email or it shows any kind of interest for a single-family, regardless of who it is, that you show some consideration and consider it for that because that's what needs to go there, single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Saying none. Okay, thank you. That'll take us to our consent agenda, and I believe we're going to remove item C. So you want to run with this?
Sure. I will move to approve the regular village board meeting minutes dated February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and I will move to accept the warrants list in the amount of four hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three and seventy-four cents.
Second. And do we need a motion to remove C?
I think you just made the motion to move A and B, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Catherine?
Second, who has a second?
Andy.
Rich.
Or Rich.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
And Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to our regular.
Need to move item C.
Oh.
Separately.
Okay, all right. If we could have a motion then to move item C to the next board meeting?
Yes.
Next board meeting or just to the regular agenda right now?
No.
To the next board meeting.
Okay, so I will move to table or postpone?
Postpone.
Postpone item C from the consent agenda until our next scheduled board meeting, which I believe is March eighteen. Six P M.
Second.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
Okay, now that'll take us to our other agenda items. If we could have a motion for item A?
I'll move to accept the May first, two thousand and twenty-two through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three annual comprehensive financial report for the village and police pension fund and place it on file.
Second.
Questions, discussion?
Hi. We have our auditor here to present a summary of the audit. Just lean to.
Hello, everyone. My name is Justine Corr. I'm one of the audit managers at Laura Buck and Heyman. I'm here tonight to present the audit and the fiscal year ended four thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. I want to start by saying thank you to the board for having me tonight to present the audit. I would also like to thank the staff who was involved in the audit process. We understand they have their normal jobs, and having auditors onsite is not the most pleasant experience for any accounting department. So we appreciate the great deal of time and effort that went into getting us to this point. And the first piece of communication I would like to talk about is the SAS one fourteen letter. The primary purpose of this letter is to convey whether or not we had any difficulties with the management during the process of the audit, and I would like to report that no such difficulties or disagreements were encountered, and that's exactly what can be found in the body of the letter. The next part is the actual FIC bound report that you had received. I will go over a couple of brief things, want to keep it simple and short. The village of East Dundee did go through the Certificate of Achievement Award again this year, which is issued by the government Finance Officers Association. It represents the highest level of reporting excellence that a government entity can receive. We will be working with the staff again next year, our stub audit, to apply for it. The next couple of pages is the independent auditors' report, which states the management's responsibility, which is the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. Our responsibility as an audit firm is to generate an opinion on those financial statements, and I'm happy to report we have issued an unmodified opinion, which is the cleanest form of opinion we can issue. The next couple of pages is management's discussion analysis, which is a great summary and narrative of the whole bound report. We understand financial statements can be difficult to comprehend, so this section breaks the data into words, charts, and graphs. If there's a storm tonight, if you have nothing else to do, feel free to go through it and please reach out if you have any questions. I just want to keep it brief with the numbers. I don't want to go into too much detail, but overall, all the funds seem to be okay. We will work with fixing any issues that came up with the management letter comments in the upcoming audit. Any questions on the numbers? If not tonight, please feel free to reach out to Brandon or the team, and we'll get back to you with the answers. You will also find anything from notes to the financial statements, which can include information on investments, inter-funds, capital assets, long-term debt. We know leases is something new that we've been implementing for all our clients, as well as other pension information. Lastly, you'll find supplementary information for such as schedules, budgetary comparison between actuals and what was budgeted for for each of the funds. The next step part is the management letter, the purpose of which is to convey any internal control recommendations that we might have or best practices that we see in the industry or upcoming GASB pronouncements. You will see a lot of GASB pronouncements listed, ninety-four, ninety-six, one hundred, one oh one. I, they've reached their, I don't know what number they're on by now, so we'll implement whatever is applicable to the village in the upcoming stub audit. Again, wanted to keep it very simple and short, but if you have any particular questions now or later, I'll be happy to take those.
I have just a couple. You know, we got an unqualified or unmodified opinion, which is good. But through the process, did you see anything, areas that were of concern for you? That maybe we were trending towards a boundary we shouldn't be or are concerned?
Nothing that we, obviously, if you look at the adjusted general entries that we've worked with, Brandon and our staff to implement to get those books to the standard of unmodified opinion. So nothing screams saying you will lose your certificate, certification with the GF O A or anything of that sort.
Okay, nothing that would affect credit rating or anything like that, so, great, great. Then as far as the police pension goes, where are we as far as percentage towards the ninety percent goal that we needed to get to by two thousand and forty? I mean, that may even be irrelevant at this point because we don't know if that's going to be in a consolidated effort and kind of.
Nobody knows that part.
Yeah, exactly, so.
About fifty-seven percent.
Fifty-seven, okay.
Laura Buck is my handler with police pension audits.
Okay, oh.
So we just incorporate it as part of the audit, which is audited by another firm.
Got you, okay. Well, that's improvement. We were in one time in the sixties, so we're getting back there, so, great. Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Can I ask a really silly question? This may be because it's dated April thirtieth from this last year, so it might just be that we're having it presented in two thousand and twenty-four and it's applicable to two thousand and twenty-three. But some of the dates for like principal officials and things like that are old?
So it would be effective for thirty twenty-three, anything that happened after will be applicable to the stub audit.
Perfect. See, we have too many budgets last year.
Clearly.
Thank you.
No? We got nothing, but thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. So you want to take one of those?
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
And Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
That'll take us to item B if we could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance granting an extension of a special, of a special use permit for crushing and recycling concrete and asphalt and resale of the material for a portion of the property located at five ninety Healy Road.
Second. Anybody have any questions on this? This is a lamp site out on seventy-two, the edge of town, easternmost portion.
Oh, you go first.
Well, this is for the crushing and recycling. What about, we granted them a sunsetted permit to park trucks on the front half of that property, and I feel like if this is expiring, wouldn't that be expiring as well?
That item is going to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their next meeting.
Okay, so it'll be further discussed.
This goes to the village board, the other item goes to P and Z and then to the village board.
Okay, fine. And have we had complaints about this process that they're doing?
I haven't received any. Are you aware of any? Any complaints?
Noise, dust, anything?
Nothing new, no.
No, okay.
And they want a twelve-month extension. Great.
And this is simply because ComEd is taking their time on the easement process? And that's why we can't move forward with the original, is the applicant here?
Hi.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question was, I think in, in general, was just about the parking and the delay on us agreeing, having, being able to agree to a development agreement is because we're waiting on the easement from ComEd?
There is, there is a ComEd easement that we are waiting for a permit on that would allow us to have access through that easement, finish and put in the roadway extension that is planned. We've recently submitted to the village a draft development agreement to start conversations with. We are currently active onsite with moving towards the planned development as we've kind of shown in the past. So I think once that easement, or once we receive the permit from ComEd, we can actually really get moving quickly on that road construction for the, for the extension of Heinz Road there.
So we don't have any idea on the timing? Is, is this really like a one-year deal or is ComEd going to like take their time on? I hope not.
And I think we asked for a one-year extension with the, you know, kind of anticipation that within that timeframe, we're going to have not only the permit that we're looking for, but also some formal agreements with the village on the actual development of the entire site.
Okay. And so with the extension, approval of this extension for the crushing and recycling, do you see anything changing in this Exhibit A that you presented to us? It's this big guy, this big map?
No, in, in terms of changing, as far as just the, the look and the feel of that north side of Heinz Road and how we plan to operate it, no, no way.
And the south side? With the building that we would love to see there?
Yeah, eventually, right. So the intent is still kind of what we've, we've been discussing with, with the folks, with you folks since the get-go. Yes, we are going to develop that south side of, of Heinz Road once we come to some formal agreements.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Trish, do you have anything? Or, um, Sarah? No? Okay. Rich, no? Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
Trustee Sauter.
Yes.
Okay, good for another year. Okay, that will take us to item C, which is a draft riverfront master plan discussion. So do we have Hitchcock here?
We do. I'll quickly introduce Lacey Lawrence. As you may recall, she's been in front of you all a number of times over the last year plus. Her firm has worked on, worked with elected officials, the community and staff to develop a draft riverfront master plan. You all have that in the packet this evening, so Lacey will take us all through what's currently presented to you as a draft master plan.
Thank you.
I'm going to really quickly try to do the lights, and I'm probably going to turn it off on everybody, so.
Oh, gosh. Great. All right, so at this milestone, what we're presenting is our draft report. So I think we met with you around the connect phase where we had done our initial assessments of the site. We connected with the community through online survey and had some data sets to share with you then. And then we met with you again with the envision and prioritizing phase where we showed the framework plan as well as the site-specific plans, and then also a draft action plan. So this report is just the culmination of all the reports and actions that we've taken throughout the process into a completed document. And so the way that it's structured is we have our acknowledgements and table of contents at the beginning, a general summary of the process. Our report is broken down into two primary chapters, which is considered Riverfront Today, which is all the analyzed phased assessments as well as our community engagement, which we coined Connect Phase. And then the second chapter is called Riverfront Tomorrow, which encompasses our envision phase, prioritizing phase, and our action plan. So that's how the report is structured, and at the very end, we have all the appendices, all the memos that were generated through the process. So things that might be harder to read, they have no pictures, but everything that documented the entire process is included at the very end in an appendix, including all the survey responses from the online survey as well as the community engagement open houses that we had. So the full data set is at the end. So here we break out what our planning process was. Again, it explains all of the different phases that I just referred to, which was analyze, connect, envision, prioritize, and then implement. And then we go through each of those in more detail. So again, we went through the history of East Dundee. We reviewed some of the natural resources that were within the area, floodplain, floodway, wetlands. We reviewed open space and parks that are within the study area. We did some demographics review of the community and its makeup. We assessed the condition of the zoning and other public infrastructure and how that might influence our plan. Revealed transit, both vehicular and pedestrian traffic. And I will say, as far as transit, also, we were given the report that was done by K O L A, K O L A. So we referenced that document in here for our transit information. You know, where are the truck routes and current routing and whether it's a major. Where are the truck routes and current routing, and whether it's a major arterial, minor arterial, et cetera, so that was there. And then connect, we get into the community engagement. So this is segments of that online survey when we asked various questions about the importance of the riverfront to the community and if improved, what amenities would they like to see improved? So again, to highlight some of the major feedback from that was preserving the river's ecosystem, providing native plantings, ornamental plantings, places to sit and observe the river and provide residents with more things to do, and further connect the riverfront with the downtown. So those are kind of the highlights of the major feedback that we received during the online survey. We also had more small group discussions with key stakeholders in the community. And so we kind of, we didn't obviously identify any of those individuals or organizations with the specific feedback who tried to summarize the high-level themes that were repeated through our discussions here. And again, most of it aligned with the community feedback and priorities as well. So that was Riverfront Today. So then we get into Riverfront Tomorrow. So these were the goals and objectives that were developed before we kind of sat down and started envisioning what the riverfront in East Dundee could be. And so we prioritize safety, use, recreation use of the river, connections, as we said, through downtown to the river and other key destinations within the community. Create opportunities for additional water-based recreation, both water-adjacent or in-water recreation. Promote and preserve the river's ecology and natural plants, as well as enhance special events opportunities, educate and engage the public, and then consider future acquisition of key properties along the river. And then we move into the framework plans. We presented this at one of the board meetings that kind of described our high-level overview of how we're gonna achieve this vision for the future of the riverfront. And then we take this and then it got developed into these site-specific applications. And so we broke the segment down into four various quadrants. So we focused on Water Street North. We focused on Bartels Park, Triangle Park in this area here. Water Street South, and then south here of Main Street was considered the Hager property.
Can I interrupt you if you just very quickly, and it's a very picky thing, but for clarity, I just, nope, the next page, the one that you were on right there.
Yep.
The label of the image on the right, that is supposed to be north of Barrington Avenue, correct? Not south? Bartels Park is south? And, oh, right?
Barrington Avenue.
Am I reading that?
No, yeah, item one would be north of Barrington.
Okay, so the image on the Water Street North segment, right-hand side, page 35, the label should be north of Barrington Avenue, not south.
Below that map you're on right now.
Right, oh, right there, south of Barrington.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're.
Should be north.
Okay, just want to clarify because that's important for what we're reading, so, thank you.
Page 35.
Leave it to an editor every time, every time.
Thank you for that.
Oh, of course.
All right, so then we go into our site-specific plans. So these were shown to the community at the community open house. And so we're gonna give some pictures of maybe what these future improvements might include. So again, this north section primarily focused on reducing the over with a Water Street, trying to infuse pedestrian and vehicular calming measures with speed tables, pedestrian crossing areas, and narrowing the Water Street so we can accommodate a wider pedestrian use path here and connect into Carpenter'sville path that exists today. And wide wayfinding, opportunities seeding, so that was primarily the focus of the River or Water Street North. I think if we, part of it falls off the map, but one other thing on North Street was trying to do an on-street bike connection from Fox River Trail. So the intent was maybe people that would be biking on Fox River Trail could come off the bike path at Max Freeman Park and then go on-street and connect here where the pedestrian bridge is. They could either go across the bridge or go north and south on the riverfront trail along the water. And then we focus on, the next section is William Bartels Park. So again, this really focused on trying to reroute traffic and vacate the section of Water Street at the park in order to connect that public open space to the water and then give people an opportunity to get down and close to the water with overlooks, maybe some limestone outcroppings in order to kind of engage more with the river in that area. And then have some playground area that's already there, but maybe more native or natural play-themed, have an open-air shelter, and maybe we'll have some other branding opportunities here with maybe small walls or iconic sign that might be in this area as well. But trying to still focus on this park being more passive, because it will have limited areas for parking. There's not going to be a parking lot at the site, and still try to focus on people walking in or parking on-street and coming to the site. So trying to keep it more passive. And then Water Street South was primarily focused on this, the street here, narrowing the street of Water Street here in order to do more of like a festival street. So that way if there's opportunities for outdoor dining, festivals that might be in this area as well.
Can we talk about that section really quickly?
Yes, please.
Because I do appreciate the need to kind of narrow it, just like we're doing further north for traffic calming and things like that. But, and I also realize when we get later into the timeline, this is the future-facing.
Yeah.
Because obviously, these are existing businesses and restaurants.
Yes.
So we are not looking at this as tomorrow, this is going to be the case. This is a long-term plan to kind of change the actual street to river area there. What, will we be looking at doing anything for the actual road ahead of the longer-term plans? Like narrowing them, narrowing it, like we're doing further north? Or will that section pretty much be a later?
It's a long-term, yeah.
Okay, the whole section?
The whole section, yeah. Just because of priorities from our discussion on action plan, the priority is really trying to focus on activating maybe Triangle Park, something that you have in your ownership now currently. Again, trying to connect the bike trail along Water Street, maybe some of those pedestrian calming activities, native area plantings and restoration enhancements, maybe benches. Those are kind of the high-priority things that we're trying to focus on in the immediate future. Because there's grants available, so it's something that could be enacted or implemented sooner.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, if we needed to, even down the road, almost break this up into street for safety measures, like the actual road improvements for safety measures versus from the road to the river, you know, doing anything with that. It's really just, it's almost two different steps to me, like.
Absolutely. I 100% agree, and, you know, based on kind of the river-street area that is already being fostered as a festival area, you know, is there the, you know, true need to? I'm very concerned about, you know, assuming and saying goodbye to businesses that are along that area and long-term homeowners, again, that are, that this area incorporates. So I would be definitely interested in trying to move the street portion along and in favor of not.
Yeah, I mean, it can all be long-term.
Yeah.
None of this is, needs to be moved up in priority. I'm just saying that we can almost decouple.
Yeah.
You know, the road, street improvement, narrowing, things like that versus, that's the only suggestion.
Yeah, and primarily was just evaluating, same with Hager, like what is the best use of like the riverfront areas?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Then we go down to Hager property. So again, this is, most of this falls within the long-range plan, but there's actions that need to happen more upfront in order to realize the long-term development of this parcel, which we document in the action plan, which I'll highlight. But primarily it focused a lot on redevelopment of the property here. So we've just shown like big box areas, because we, we'll put together our developer RFP and kind of assess maybe where the buildings might be placed on-site, but the major intent of the design was rerouting here of the street. So we're trying to dead-end River Street here rather than bisecting the development area from the park area adjacent from the water, and trying to look at it more cohesively. And again, push most of the priority traffic through here and then really utilize this for open space. So again, there's a combination of various recreation amenities through here. Maybe you could do outdoor events here. This was one where we proposed our accessible kayak and canoe launch area. Carpenter'sville is proposing to put in a new accessible kayak and canoe launch just up-street of where, you know, the divide between the municipalities happened, and so we thought trying to push ours further down so that gives people a nice segment to, you know, portage in, portage out here. We also have more opportunity to have parking, obviously launches, if you're bringing your kayak or canoe, you need parking in order to bring your watercraft and launch it. But again, that was kind of the highlight of the Hager property redevelopment. And then we got into our segment of plantings. So one of the things that we wanted to show in the report was just giving you a plant palette, because one of the major items that came out of the connect phase was seeing additional landscape improvements, seeing additional native plantings in and along the riverfront area. So we developed a palette of plants for you to choose from when you're doing that work. We divided by upland, prairie, so these are drier areas, so if you have drier conditions to utilize a palette like this. And then we have kind of riverbank, so this gets wetter closer down by the water's edge. And then floodplain, wet music, which is kind of in that intermediate transitional zone that you would pick some plant material from this, from the native plant lists. We also gave some plant, like shrubs and trees and plugs if you want to do something in river for enhancements. And then we get to the implement. So this is the action plan, which shows all the priorities from, you know, now through the next five years, and then there's a lot of majority that falls into the long-range action plan. So this was meant to be a five-year plan. So we've got the graphic, and then this section just reiterates that in more like written form. But again, the priority was, the top is ongoing. I don't know if you can see that well, but it's, you know, native planting, native management, enhancement of the riverfront with plantings. And then we break these into various colors, which Hager property is this rust color. Water Street, William Bartels Park is this teal color, even hard for me to read back here. And then River Street is in like the gray. And so again, it kind of highlights that we want to focus on William Bartels Park with oscillate application to submit for grant funding for improvement. But prior to that, we want to focus on potentially the vacation of Water Street at the park. And then I know from one of the meetings, one of the commissioners had mentioned that we wanted to maybe evaluate if we took out Water Street, what might that force traffic onto other streets? And we want to make sure that those infrastructure is ready to receive that traffic. And then, so we have that little piece first to assess maybe what the outcomes might be from vacating Water Street, implement those, and then focus on vacation of Water Street at Bartels Park. And then, as we've mentioned, focus on the acquisition of Hager property. So that's another grant opportunity, I think, that we put in here, similar to Illinois Department of Natural Resources. They have an open space development grant, but they also have a land acquisition grant to help you acquire property that will be used specifically for recreation. So that's another opportunity to find some matching funds to offset some of the costs of those improvements. Again, a majority of that falls further into, implement of Hager property is beyond the five years. And then all of our appendices, so again, this is all the memos and reports that were prepared through the process. No pictures. All the survey results from the online survey are all in here, so you can find the full results in the back with all the questions that were asked, even some of the write-in responses are in here. And then our community open house, so we have people select their preferences, so those are all listed in here as well. Any questions?
Did any part of the study look at soil erosion? Or shoreline, I should say, erosion over time, or if we're experiencing any now or like over the last, I don't know, 20, 50 years?
Right.
There is, obviously, the outcroppings along what was shown near Bartels Park is one thing, but that's largely aesthetic. I don't know if, you know, a greater need to hold it back would be necessary.
Right, so a lot of it would come down to like native plantings. You might need some other bioengineered, like maybe some stone-toe riprap in order to help kind of protect the shoreline. But most of it seemed like it was in good condition. Obviously, we need to clear out some of the invasive plant materials, some understory invasive trees and shrubs like buckthorn, and try to introduce some of the native plants, deep-rooting plants, because those will help to anchor the soil as well. And so that's kind of where some of that comes into the ongoing task, is to evaluate each of the sections. And when we're doing improvements, like Triangle Park, like incorporate some of that into the grant application so you can tackle a section at a time. But most, none of it seemed like it was in really bad condition, at least along Water Street North. And then some of those, like in that area where Water Street was going, or Bartels Park, as we were talking about, maybe regrading some of the banks where we have some additional land to make it gentler slopes to try to help with any erosion that you're experiencing now or in the future.
Yeah, because we got a fairly gentle slope to the land on the south end of the Hager site. That's, that waterline is, there's not much of a drop, you know, so. You know, in the event of a big rain, which we've had in the past, you know, how much of whatever it is we do is going to be, you know, affected by it and how bad.
Right. Yeah, obviously with, it is part of a natural system, so there is likely going to be some of that. You might still get the same thing if you armored it. Like, I don't think there's necessarily one better than the other approach. But yeah, there is a chance that if you try to use more native plantings, that, yeah, you might get a really big storm, a flood event that might wash some of the plants out. And then as part of the maintenance, you would come back in and kind of try to re-establish some of those. But the native plants obviously are, thrive in that type of condition, so hopefully they will, you know, help to withstand and hold the bank.
And Hitchcock would also assist in the grant writing or seeking grants?
Yes.
Okay, good. And do we know right now, I mean, the ones that you mentioned, is there any deadlines that we would have to meet, either for now or in 2025, that we'd have to apply for a year ahead of time?
Yes.
What I've looked into requires that much lead time.
It does require, yeah. So right now, IDNR has that land acquisition grant is open right now through March 22nd. I have to check the date, but that one's open and accepting applications, and that's a 50/50 match for you to acquire land that would be used for recreation. So that's where I specifically think about Hager property, like just that triangle piece against, adjacent to the river. Because that all would be proposed being recreation as part of that grant. You can also, so this triangle piece here.
Well, would that grant be applicable to money that's already spent? Reinvest, yeah.
Because you've already acquired the property?
Well, chances are. Hopefully, too, very soon, so.
Because if you haven't yet, then the deal hasn't been done yet, but you would need to do a. Oh, okay.
So it's very soon.
Yeah, okay, so then no, you wouldn't be able to retroactively apply for grant for a property that you've already in the process of acquiring.
Okay, that's good to know.
On the FEMA notes in the like residential areas, FEMA hazard mitigation assistance for acquiring those kinds of properties, are you seeing a trend of, I live in the floodplain kind of near the river? It seems like FEMA and flood insurance policies are getting more and more strict, not wanting homes to be in there. Like, as a big flood comes, are you seeing in any other areas that these programs to get out of homes if flood insurance becomes unattainable? Is that kind of the strategy? Not that we would try to take people's homes, but if they're not livable with flood insurance costs, is that kind of how that program works?
Yeah, you enroll in a program, and yeah, it's not incidental take-type approach. But yeah, you would, they try to prioritize properties in floodway. Obviously, that's probably the most at-risk properties and floodplain. But yeah, so we've been doing that program like in Kankakee along the riverfront, because they do have some key properties that they see continual issues with damage from flood events, and so it'll help those individuals. They would, you're purchasing the property, and then you would restore it with open space. So you wouldn't be permitted to build another building. So you wouldn't be permitted to build another building in those, on those lands.
Something that can flood a little better.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. But I think it also provides like relocation assistance and other things with, in those events.
Thanks.
But as far as, you said, other grants, so OSLAD, so for development of recreation. So we're talking about Triangle Park. That one will be opened this summer, seeking grant projects. And from what we've heard, obviously, it's not official. But they say this cycle might be the last robust cycle that they have of 50,000, 50 million or more. And then also maybe a chance that it might dissolve or have significantly less funding in fiscal year 2026 or 2025. So if you're interested, they're saying this is probably one of the last robust years potentially for that program. Obviously, it's politics that could change.
And that's a grant for specifically, not for acquisition, but for construction, development of recreation. So the Bartels Park would qualify possibly for that?
Yeah. Because you already own the land there. As I kind of mentioned, it does, it prioritizes recreation with the funding. So when you start throwing in infrastructure, like the cost to actually vacate River Street, then those projects might be scored less than maybe something that's focused all on recreation. So that's why in the action plan, we propose that we maybe look at vacating Water Street and restoring it in advance of that project. Just so all of your dollars for recreation go towards recreation and give you the highest like score. Or do that, you can do it at the same time as that project, just as long as you're not stating you're utilizing those funds from that grant to vacate the River Street. Because they put a cap on like 20%. The funds can go towards infrastructure costs.
So any grant application that was submitted ahead of any land acquisition would still qualify us to see the grant, correct?
Say that again?
Any application that was submitted before any land acquisition, regardless of whether or not we did anything to it, would still qualify us for a grant, correct?
Yeah, you have to own the land in order to apply for the development grant. To apply for the acquisition, you don't need to own it first.
Right.
They even state that they don't want you reaching out to the landowner, but you want to know if it's a viable option, I believe, before you apply for grant money for it.
Gotcha.
As you have also mentioned, you have those possible opportunities for...
Yeah, so there's RTP, which is Regional Trail Program, which is also through DNR. So that's a cycle that happens usually yearly as well for trails. So that would just focus on trail improvements. So if we're talking about maybe Water Street trail improvements, you could focus on that. And then RTP, or ITEP, sorry, is with Illinois Department of Transportation. That one's a little bit more challenging to do, and that one focuses more on transportation-related, so bike trails, maybe more so than pedestrian trails. But that one, you need to be pretty well through design and engineering to submit for the grant. They like to see you already be through culinary engineering for a grant like that. But something, again, that's typically offered annually on a cycle.
And I forget, if we're changing ownership of the Fox River Trail, where right there it's the county, or the King County Forest Reserve, I think, owns it, Alpentill Hager, would that stay the same, or would the village take over that portion? Or that's, you know, either one doesn't matter?
Yeah, I think you would just work a partnership out, either IGA, or how you want to approach, like working collaboratively on that.
Okay.
Wonderful. Anybody else have questions?
The next, the final session of this process is, any of your comments will be incorporated into the final report, which we'll come back to you in two weeks for final adoption, formal final adoption. And then you have a Hitchcock Design Group subsequent to that for any grant processes or any design.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like the timing for the grant applications is real critical. So we'd want to, you know, keep in touch on moving it that way, so.
Right. And then you've already done a huge step, which is incorporated a significant amount of community engagement. You've developed a comprehensive plan. So all of that looks really good, specifically towards like an OSLAD grant application. They like to see that their, your projects are part of a larger vision, that it might be a collaborative project, and it really helps stretch the dollars that you're given.
Gotcha. Good. Rich, did you have anything?
No.
Great. I think we're done then.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, then that'll take us to item D, which is a downtown flats area sewer system evaluation survey discussion. So Phil, this is your area, if you want to take us through that.
We have a question, if it's possible to do public comment for somebody who wasn't here at the beginning?
Yeah, I suppose we can. Phil, sure if you wouldn't mind. No, 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 it's okay. Do you want to take, please?
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, just, can you just state your name and address for us?
Yes. Hi, my name is Alina Kim. Can you please spell that? A-L-I-N-C-A. Last name is Kim, K-I-M. Thank you for letting me speak. I'll try to be fast. I'm here to talk about one of the businesses that's in East Dandee, and wanted to inform you about like bad business practices that are going on at the Baudis Camp. So we had a contract with Gold Star Leasing, and they're acting very bad. He's insulting his customers, like B and others. And he's not returning deposits, and he's keeping about, well, more than $35,000. So I have everything in writing. I've been to the police, and, well, I was told to come here, and just wanted to let you know about what's going on, and I wanted to ask for some help, that if you can do something about it. I can leave the documents and all of the documentation and the contract, and that we've done all the payments. And he's been harassing my drivers, like preventing drivers to get loaded, and they had to drive empty from, you know, other states. Though everything was paid, and we were acting well. So I'll just leave these documents here probably.
If you would. Thank you.
And thank you for listening to me.
No problem. Okay, thank you. I'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
You too.
Good evening. So in front of you this evening is the INI study report from Baxter and Woodman. As you may recall, last year, they began an INI study that was essentially comprised of two phases, the manhole inspections and the smoke testing. And I'll just go through a couple things here real quickly on the slides. If you look at the, if you've seen the very last page of the report, it shows essentially the study area, which is the flats in our downtown area. In the slide, it talks about, we studied that area in particular because of its close proximity to the Fox River, elevated groundwater table and an aging, aged sanitary sewer system that has had a history of sewer backups into homes and businesses. And also increased stormwater and groundwater into our sanitary system increases flows at our wastewater treatment plant. So we end up treating rainwater into our groundwater. And the Hill Street lift station pump project that we've talked about a number of times here with you was put in, as you may recall, to help pump stormwater and groundwater through the lift station into the collecting, into the transmission main, to our, ultimately to our wastewater treatment plant. So, next slide. Couple definitions. Inflow is essentially stormwater that finding its way into our sanitary sewer system. Infiltration is essentially groundwater that's finding its way into our sanitary sewer system. And the graphic shows, kind of defines the difference between inflow and infiltration. So the manhole inspections that were performed last year, they looked at 60 sanitary sewer manholes. And that's essentially this structure right here. And so a number of, I believe out of the 60, 22 had defects. And so we're looking to, some of those defects resulted in replacing manhole covers, which we've done. So the bounce, which would result in about 15 manholes, will need to be rehabilitated this year. We did budget for those repairs. And so smoke testing here is, as you may recall, injecting a supply of smoke into the sanitary sewer system. Smoke visible outside the injection point indicated leaks in the sanitary sewer system. And so one of our objectives was to identify cross connections. So that's somehow, the sanitary sewer is some interconnected, somehow interconnected with the storm sewer system. And obviously, we don't want that. So, because that could be a source of sanitary flow getting into the storm sewer system. And there were possible, 10 possible interconnects. So one thing that we're going to propose to do this year, hold us here, the smoke testing. Here's one of the manholes here by 12 Hill Street that was inspected. The structure here, I don't know, it's hard to see, but it's a brick, it's a brick basin. And so that can allow stormwater to infiltrate through the wall into the sanitary sewer. So essentially, one way to identify the interconnects between the two systems is to dye test. And that's essentially filling the storm sewer with dyed water to simulate a rainstorm. And then dye is a food-grade product, and essentially the same product used to dye the Chicago River. Here's an example of one dyed sanitary sewer system, or excuse me, sanitary or storm, most likely a sanitary. We would then monitor the sanitary manholes for dyed water that left the storm sewer and enters the sanitary sewer. And the estimated cost to perform the dyed water testing is between 25 and 30,000, although I do have a proposal that we'll review and potentially bring back to you at some point in the near future. Manhole rehabilitation, approximately 15 manholes, possibly 30 to 35,000, but we're in the process of developing specifications, and we may solicit competitive bids for that project. And then we have our budget, and our current fiscal year 24 budget is a little over 62,000 to perform manhole rehabilitation and also dyed water testing. So the idea is to get a strong handle on where are our needs for the sanitary sewers. And then recommended for 25 and beyond would be a closed-circuit televising program. And from that, we would develop a sewer rehabilitation program. So essentially, we do have a sewer TV camera as part of our sewer division, if you will. But that system is utilized more for locating blockages and identifying suspected or known problems within the sanitary sewer main, and sometimes storm sewers as well. But this type of closed-circuit televising would be a more comprehensive program where we would contract that out, and they would log, develop video of each sewer segment that's televised. And then from then, they would develop logs, so we would know exactly where there's cracks or defects or displaced pipe sections. And then from there, we could develop rehabilitation program that might involve point repairs, which is essentially repairing the sanitary sewer at the point of failure, typically via excavation. So if we see a pipe that's displaced, we would excavate down and replace that section of pipe. Sewer main replacement, that might be the replacement of longer runs, maybe 100 feet, 200 feet, depends on condition, quality of the pipe. And then also possibly involve sewer lining, which if you are not familiar with that process or program, it's cure and place, pipeline, which essentially is you pull a quote-unquote, call it a sock, and you inject it with hot water, and you invert it, and then it heats it and cures it. So it essentially lines the inside of the sewer pipe. And so it's my understanding that we have lined some sewers in the downtown flats area, and we provide that information. So those would not necessarily need to be retelevised. We would probably do it just to confirm the quality of the lining, but...
So can that in-place lining only be done on a clay line? Can it be done on French lines we have up in the terrace? Which, I mean, that's for storm, basically.
Sure.
It can?
Storm and sanitary can line.
It's just basically, it's like a bladder, isn't it? And just an inflatable bladder system that hardens. So...
And there's even technology now for lining water mains, and that's something we're looking into on the water side. But it's less common, but it's still an option.
And if you had PVC line already, I mean, you're just talking about cast iron, the lines? I mean, why wouldn't you need it, I guess is my question, if what we're end up replacing each time we have a main break is PVC, would there be a need to line that?
It would be for a longer run, where we would line a water main. So it would not be, I guess, suppose you could do it for shorter lengths, but probably more economical to do it for a longer run, a longer length of water main pipe.
And, you know, I know it's kind of a moot point to ask, but how would we end up with a cross between our sewer, our waters, our supply and our sewer lines, the storm sewer and the sanitary lines?
We have a sanitary sewer system directly into the river, so.
Okay. So that would have been, what, 100, 120 years ago, something like that, maybe? Okay. So do we know, you said there were 10 locations, that we know that there's a cross contamination of the two lines?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So we would, and we know of them, right? So if we, if we find them, would it just be a matter of opening up that storm water, that storm line, and then just, you know, plugging it, basically?
Likely a point repair, possibly on both systems.
Oh, all right.
We may need to disconnect if there is an interconnect between the two, but it may also avoid, involve a point repair on both the sanitary and the storm.
Okay.
Or you could have cracks in the pipes, and somehow water is leaving one, and they may be in close proximity to the other, and it's flowing underground from one pipe to the next. So it may not be a direct interconnect. It may be compromised pipes within both systems.
Okay.
So those are, the next steps this year are to, again, pursue manhole rehabilitation, a dyed water testing, and then 25 and beyond is to budget for televising, point repairs, sewer main replacement, and/or lining.
So are you developing a budget as well for those things for 25?
We will, yes. For 25 and beyond, yes.
And then the closed-circuit televising that you do is basically in reaction to a problem that you know is there, so that you can better deal with it, where this is more of a proactive, comprehensive, closed-circuit televising?
Exactly. Our, our system is used more for, in a reactive nature, to respond. Someone says, I've got, I've witnessed something, or placed one backup or something, can confirm what's the condition of the pipe with our system.
Right, okay.
So the storm lines in the flats, though, is a hard line, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, it's not, it's not like what we have up in the, in the terrace. That's a, isn't that just a, kind of a displacement type of, that French drain type system where it just dissipates into the, into the ground? It's almost like a long tube aquifer, basically.
Our storm sewer system in this area is all directly piped to the Fox River, yes.
That's like 70 years old now, so, all right.
But because of the age of the system in the downtown area here, we may have water, groundwater that's finding its way into the storm sewer system, as well as the sanitary system. And of course, if there are cracks or displaced pipe sections on the sanitary side, it could be finding its way out, and of course, into the soils, and then into the groundwater system and out.
Big money. Big money, gonna be eventually, anyway.
I think this, this year, relatively speaking, the lower dollar value projects. I think going forward, depending upon what's discovered or determined, it may be significantly higher.
Is this potentially going to determine where we're replacing water mains as well for lead line, considering probably doing the same excavation of both?
Potentially, yes, yes. So I think if there are point repairs and/or sewer main replacements, we would do those ahead of reconstructing some of the older roads.
Just wondering if we can blend the two efforts, if any of the state money that we would get for the lead line replacement can go towards, you know, these excavation costs of getting to the lines, which is gonna be...
Any type of IEP A low interest, low interest loan funds are, they're kind of two separate buckets. So we have one for public water supplies and one for wastewater sewer collection system. So there, we'd have two different loan applications for those, for those funds. And they could be pursued concurrent, if they would be two separate buckets of water altogether, so, or money.
So how much of this will be twenty-twenty-four, as far as the work?
Looking at about, dollar-wise, fifty to sixty thousand for this, for the balance of this year.
It's budgeted already?
Yes.
So the homes that you listed that had smoke come into, say, their basement, do they, do they have to do anything on their end to fix this? I saw some things are like, ten-dollar caps are needed for certain things, and other things are more expensive. Like, have you reached out to any of these to let them know?
We are gonna communicate with them directly and let them know that their clean-out caps need to be replaced, which I think is mainly the repair, or how to address their, their issues. Some of the smoke, for example, that came into the village hall, and there's quite a bit of it, was a, there was some sanitary piping in the basement of the village hall that had corroded over time. And the smoke had kind of found its way up through the service and into the basement. I was in a home, I believe it's on Remmer, Remmer, and that particular resident, they didn't have a P-trap in their floor drain. So just a, just a straight connect to the sanitary system. And so that was a source of smoke into their basement, so, it's a much older home as well, so...
That'll be a good source for a backup.
Yes, for sure. Now, the neighbor across the street, same age of their home, but they, at some point in time, someone had put a P-trap into their basement, so that wasn't, wasn't an issue for them.
Well, actually, it could back up anyway, but at least sewer gas wouldn't come back in.
Correct, sewer gas, exactly, yep, yep. So this particular resident, we encourage them to consider making some modifications to their...
Have you inspected all of these already, and like, all the reported smoke incidents?
I personally have not, so we're working with Baxter Women to do that.
Can we have a copy of that presentation?
Yes, it should be in the packet, it should be at the, possibly at the very end. This is directly out of the packet.
It is in here.
It is?
Yeah.
So it's right after?
Yeah, three fifty-four.
It's at the very end of the agenda item.
Yep, that's it.
I didn't think that this matched what we were looking at up there, but maybe...
So this here, we did leave out a hundred and some pages of manhole inspection reports, so if you're interested in... I appreciate those with you, but can't script over.
Yeah, I haven't gone through the whole thing, so you clearly haven't.
Yeah, okay, I'll figure it out.
So, no, so...
Last page of the report does show the study area, and then jump over to the, to the PowerPoint.
You can add the presentation to the agenda page separately from the packet.
That'd be awesome.
It's just easier to access like that.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. Oh, it's, page one, no, page...
I'll figure it out.
Page three fifty-three.
Okay.
Yes.
Three fifty-three on...
Three fifty-three out.
We found it! We were just so wrapped in your presentation.
Yes.
So a lot of, a lot of great information has been collected so far, but we still certainly have more to go.
Is there a reason why we only did the smoke test in the flats?
At this point, that's been our biggest problem area through the years on the sanitary sewer side, so that's why we kind of focused on, on this particular area. Now, we've had, more recently, some sanitary sewer issues in the terrace. We've got some, so I think that may be the, the next area that we look at studying. Last year, late last year, we had a section of sanitary main that had some large, some collapsed sections and some large holes. And it was somehow allowing larger boulders. I reported those in my, my bi-weekly reports, but we had some large boulders in it. And along Park Street, we had, I think that sanitary sewer repair was fifteen feet down. Of course, it'd be expensive, but it was needed because we had a number of backups occurring in that particular area. And so it was just a matter of time before the next one. In fact, a couple of residents asked, are any of the area developments causing these large boulders to find their way into the sanitary sewer? No, it's just collapsed pipe sections. There's a lot of shifting up on that particular area, a lot of rock and stone and gravel in the soils.
For a related question, when we do have big storms, or even like Monday, or whenever we had the tornadoes and we had some rain on First Street in the flats, I noticed that it goes, it fills way over the curves, like covers both sidewalks on both sides, and just takes twenty minutes before it'll start pumping out. Is it like a diameter capacity, or just stuff getting launched in? And if we do tear into replacing anything or doing work, are there ways that we can have more throughput?
In the excessive rainfall events, most sanitary sewers are not designed or constructed to accommodate hundred-year floods, five-hundred-year floods with regularity. It's, so it's a, it's a capacity issue, volume of water based on what the capacity of the pipe is.
So even for just like a storm? Like this, like it's just, I mean, it's a storm?
Yeah, there was a ton of rain, there was some like hail on it, I mean, there was...
It's possible there was some debris at the catch bay at the inlet.
I noticed that the street cleaners were out the next morning, so thank you for clearing it.
It's possible that's the case, yeah.
But yeah, it's pretty typical when there's a heavy rain that that happens in that section. But it does always go down, but it seems like it's waiting for all the water to come downhill to us and then drain out eventually.
I can connect with you, and we can try to identify which basins in particular, and we can take a look at those. We can televise the sanitary sewers adjacent to the basins and...
I'll send you a photo as well, I took one.
Please do, thank you.
So is anything with the downtown lift station, I'll street, gonna have to be done in conjunction with any of this work?
No, Hill Street, other than what we budgeted for a replacement pump, replacing the other pump in this current fiscal year budget. So once that's replaced and upgraded, we shouldn't have to do anything anytime in the near future. No, that should resolve its ability to pump excess stormwater through the, through the lift station, which it didn't prior to that point.
Right, right. Okay, great, anybody else? I almost called you Trifigans here.
So we'll likely have agenda items coming forth for you for the other project at some point, other projects for the year.
All right, thanks, Phil. All right, that'll take us to item E, if we could have a motion.
I will move to approve a resolution authorizing the village to waive competitive bidding and enter into agreement with JM Irrigation LLC for the depot irrigation system project in the amount of twenty-six thousand two hundred dollars and zero cents.
Second.
Questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Is the technical nature of this expenditure, why we're waiving it? We've seen where, I mean, I don't know, just, we waive purchases that are larger. For some reason, we're just not bothering with the bidding process.
We reached out to a number of contractors, irrigation contractors, and it was hard to find, it was difficult to find two that pay prevailing wages. So we went with the two quotes, they're fairly close in proximity to each other, so decided to recommend these two. Eight hundred dollars separates these two particular proposals. We can continue looking, there are, but I spoke with a number of irrigation contractors, and they, they don't find it to be cost-effective to pay prevailing wages for this type of work. So we did find two, and I'm sure there are others out there, and we just stopped at the two when we found two.
It's also a practical reality that we could put this out to bid, we could spend a significant amount of staff time drafting RFP documents, we could put it out to bid, and the reality is, what contractor's gonna come back and give you a twenty-six thousand dollar price when they're gonna have to put in several thousand dollars in staff time just to respond to the RFP? So for these smaller dollar amount projects, it's very difficult to get a return on the investment of getting the best price for the residents while also following the competitive bidding regulations. So it's not ideal, certainly, but in instances where you're spending twenty-five thousand dollars, and I get it, that's a lot of money. We also have to balance available resources with return on investment, so that is why this is the way it is. But I was glad that Phil was able to find two bids that were relatively close to one another, so we feel like we're in the ballpark, and, you know...
It comes under what we budget.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it comes under budget, yeah.
Yeah, in the ballpark and under budget.
And if eventually someday, I should say when, we acquire the northern parcel, southern parcel that is lovingly referred to as the gravel lot, Phil has assured me that we can add on to this existing system so that we have a cohesive system that will water both sections of beautiful lawn that us can envision.
And last year in particular, it involved quite a bit of staff time to keep, because obviously, as we know, the depot area gets a lot of activity throughout the summer, spring, summer, and fall season. So it's, it's been a pretty significant effort for our staff time to water this manually. So this is for us a huge, a tremendous improvement, keeping that space green and lush.
Cool. Great, any other questions, discussion?
Nope.
Great, thanks, so Catherine?
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Coonty?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Tribber?
Yes.
And Trusty Sock?
Yes. Okay, I guess that takes us to the end. We don't have to read in, I don't know, so, okay, that one's dead. And that'll take us to board reports, Andy, you wanna start it?
Uh, no report, it's done.
Rich?
No report.
Okay.
Scott?
Uh, no report.
Report, I have nothing. Kathleen?
Um, praise is Saturday, if anybody wants to have some fun this weekend.
Safe fun, safe, safe fun?
Safe fun, yeah. I did have a question for Chief with regards to his email about the dog ordinance. And if there is a plan on not only the education part, but on the beeped-up enforcement that he's, he's planning, I think I want a little bit, few more details on specifically what that means. And also, in, in a situation like this, if there is an incident between a dog and another, and they're with an owner or would not, without the owner present of the, of the dog, and that if the quote-unquote victim or whoever the dog encountered that didn't want the encounter doesn't, or isn't inclined to, to write up a formal complaint for whatever reason, I, I'm hoping that we can have a way to track, still, even though a formal complaint hasn't made, been made against it, that, that there was an incident that still happened, and so that that can be tracked. And, and, you know, for the safety of, of the dog, for the safety of the victim, and...
We can, we can move from there, so that was one thing that I was hoping to talk about. And then are you gonna talk about the events in general, the village committee meeting?
You can go right ahead. Oh! I had one thing, but you can go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I was just...
I'll, I'll tag on to whatever you don't...
Okay, that sounds good, whatever I failed to mention.
That's all I had unless, unless I have something to tag on to.
So for, for the events committee meeting, we had a really, we had a lot of really good conversations about a lot of topics. We did talk about the depot, the newly forming depot council. We've kind of gone through the applications, we set out sort of a filtering system just to kind of help out, like especially just prioritizing residents over non-residents, and that filters out a whole slew. So we have some of those, there is someone who would like to be on the depot council, who is currently on the plan in zoning commission, so that's, I think, I'm sure you're aware of that. That's sort of a little hiccup we're gonna have to figure out. We talked about the depot market that is coming back again this year, and we actually have a Sunday market that's going to be happening this year, which will be great. That's a... Yeah, that's a different organization that's renting the depot grounds for that. So those are some of the things from the depot council, and then I'm going to diverge. I'm sorry, I forgot something, but just really quickly, the street parking, Erica, can we follow up on that? Like, May, June, I mean, there's no rush on it, but the, we said that we were gonna have a trial year this year, but the sign's out, not enforced, and then figure out permanent situation going into next fall. Can we like May-ish, June-ish, kind of make sure we bring that back up?
Sure.
Thank you, those are my things.
I'm not, no, too, we're gonna, we're gonna bag the signs for the parade, right?
Yeah, for the parade.
For the Friday.
Yeah, that's great.
Oh, that?
Yeah, yeah, all of, like, I think First and North and Michigan and two others, I think, around there.
Right, so Jeff, you've got some recommendations from the committee?
Uh-huh.
For, for, great, awesome. And then also, we talked about some more details on food trucks, and we are having a subsequent meeting to go into depth with that so that we have a really good proposal and a lot of loose ends tied up to recommend to the board.
Yep, follow up on Tuesday, not tomorrow, week after.
Yeah.
That's all, that's all we had, yes. Joint up right over here.
Yeah.
And we'll go to staff, Erica?
First, I wanted to congratulate Brandis and Anna on clean audit, fantastic work. It is very difficult to go through that process, and I know she's gonna start it again shortly because we had the stub here, but I, you know, a lot of things that keep me up at night, knowing that Brandis is covering our finances, it's one of the, one less thing I have to worry about. So thank you for that. And also, just wanted to give more shout-out to all of our amazing staff. It's, it's sometimes a little difficult to sit here and listen to the criticisms of our staff from members of the public who have no idea how much time, effort, and energy, passion, and pain goes into day-to-day public service, and our staff is phenomenal. I enjoy working with them, I appreciate their professionalism, I appreciate all of the little things that they do. I know Catherine has been working very hard on getting our events going for this season, and a lot of that is below the radar because what gets put on is something amazing that everybody gets to enjoy, but it doesn't happen without all the hard work behind the scenes of Catherine, the rest of the village staff, Franco, Phil, Public Works team, everybody else, everybody chips in, and I appreciate all of those efforts, and... And just wanted to make sure that we publicly recognize our amazing staff, so.
Second.
That's all.
Tell it.
No report.
Joe, got any? Phil, we've heard, and...
Brandis?
All right, okay.
Do we need to do anything other than personnel?
That's it.
Anything?
Couldn't hear the phone.
Any...
You guys have anything?
Have you guys got anything else for executive session other than personnel?
Okay, then that will take us to the end, and we will entertain then a motion to adjourn into executive session.
I will move to close this meeting to the public and media under provisions of the Illinois Open Medias Act, ILCS 120/2, C1, personnel and legal counsel. And we will not be returning to a public session afterwards.
Right, second. Kathy?
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Coonty?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Tribber?
Yes.
Trusty Sotter?
Yes.
And President Lino?
Yes. Okay, that concludes the meeting. Thank you all for coming, appreciate it. We'll see you in two weeks.